Welcome to our August 18, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I'm Mayor John Lewis and it's good to have you here. Normally, we are here on a Thursday night and we're here a little bit earlier because this week the council were involved in what's called the Annual League of Cities Conference. And so, thank you for the flexibility for many of you have changed your schedule. We will begin with Councilmember Taylor introducing our scout, oh, our Sun Devil, thank you, that's right, to lead us in the pledge. And we invite all in council chambers to stand and be participants with the pledge. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Christian Gomez, a fellow Sun Devil fan here, who will lead us in the pledge. Christian?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Occasionally, we will have a member of the council offer the invocation and that occasion is tonight, Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here today. We're grateful for our community, we're grateful for the people and for the businesses and for the churches and schools that work so hard to make our community whole. We are extremely grateful for the men and women who serve in uniform, we're grateful for their efforts, for their diligence and for their desire to protect and to serve. We pray that thou would watch over us in this meeting tonight, that we will be able to lift up the community and make good decisions and leave the community better than we found it. We pray for these things and ask for thy blessing in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Our town clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook. Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
For him as present.
Thank you. We will proceed with our presentations and proclamations. Vice Mayor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. The town of Gilbert has had a tradition, when we've had an employee that has served with our town and organization for a long time, we recognize the value that they've brought to the town. But tonight, we're going to also recognize two of our canines that have served the town faithfully and protecting our community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Dorn and the team.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As the Vice Mayor said, about a year or so ago, the town started recognizing our employees as they retire and we got to thinking the other day that we've got a couple of our canines that are retiring and, you know, they're a member of our family at both the town of Gilbert and also the Gilbert Police Department and thought it would be fitting that we extend that same appreciation to our canines as they retire. In a minute, I'm going to turn this over to Greg Thomas and I want to point out to you that Greg is internationally known for his abilities as a police canine trainer and is well-known throughout the world and represents the town of Gilbert all over the world. In fact, he'll tell you where we get these dogs, but it's through Greg's relationship that we developed with the police in Holland that allow us to get the pick of the litter, so to speak, no pun intended. But I can't say enough about Greg's abilities and what he does for the town of Gilbert and Gilbert Police Department. You'll notice we only have one dog here tonight and that's because our second dog has already entered into retirement. And as our dogs retire, if the handlers have the ability to keep the dogs, we allow them to do that. They purchase the dogs from the town for a dollar and they get to keep the dogs with their families. Sometimes, especially when they're bringing new dogs in, they don't have the ability to keep two. So, in this case, Justin Betts, his canine retired and is actually living in a home for retired police canines in Texas now. So, I'm going to turn this over to Greg, he can tell you a little bit more. When Greg's done, what we're going to do is we're going to show you a video to introduce you to the new dogs that have come into the police department. It would have gotten a little bit crowded to try to bring the new dogs in with the retiring dogs. So, with that, Greg?
All right, thank you. All right, this is Chucky, he's nine and a half years old, Dutch Shepherd. He's worked for the department since 2008, so about six-plus years. He's along the same bloodlines of the dogs that we've just acquired. So, he's actually an uncle to the dog that I'm taking on now and the dog that Officer Betts has. So, I'll just talk a little bit about Chucky and how we acquire the dogs and why. The chief kind of alluded to the fact that the dogs come from Holland, that's kind of the epicenter for police dogs, not only in that part of the world, but throughout the world. So, there's a competitive sport in Holland that produces the qualities that we look for in police work. So, that's why we get the dogs from Holland. Generally, people are interested in how the dogs live, why they retire and so forth. So, I'll tell you some of the more interesting facts that commonly come up. Because the dogs are raised in Holland and trained there, they're obviously trained in the native language. So, the commands we use still to this day are in Dutch. So, it requires a little bit of thinking on our part and it's a little bit of a secret language between us and the dog. Most bad guys don't know Dutch, so. And occasionally, Chucky will actually listen to it, so. Hey, off. Chucky retired primarily because he's got arthritis in one of his front legs and also he's missing most of his teeth. If you're in the front row, you can probably see that. When he falls asleep now, his tongue comes out and hangs because there's no teeth to keep it in. So, it's an important part of the job. All right, the new dogs are named Bono and Lenz and again, they are nephews to Chucky and Zorro, all closely related. So, they're trained for narcotics detection and then also locating people and occasionally chasing down bad guys when they decide to run from us. All right, I think I've covered it, I don't want to talk too much, so we'll get on with the video.
Hey, Gilbert Police, stop right there! Hey, stop right there, send the dog! Stop right there, send the dog!
Don't worry, it's just a drill. This dog, Bono, is one of two new additions to the Gilbert Police Department Canine Unit. His brother Lenz is also on the team.
He's adjusting very well. The heat, I think, kind of slows him down a little bit, I think all these dogs kind of do that, they have to sort of get used to it. So, just plenty of water.
These new recruits are joining their brother Murphy, already in the canine unit.
I can't think of another agency in the country that has all three of the dogs from the same line and the same litter.
All of the dogs come from a breeding and training program in Holland and these two are almost ready to start working with their new partners in crime fighting.
We are doing training now for about the next six weeks, teaching him narcotics detection, which is something he didn't know.
The dogs hone their skills before and during their time on the force.
Get it out, little boy, get it out of here!
Most of his training to date has been on a grass field in daylight. We try to transition the dogs from that into, say, a building that's pitch black with an alarm blaring, broken glass on the floor. It's a little more challenging for these dogs.
And some of the training will take place here, a new facility under construction where they'll practice catching criminals and sniffing out drugs.
Oh, you did it, that's a good boy, that's a good boy!
This training, this, all this work, is all fun and games for them.
While it may be fun and games for this protective pooch, they're still a serious certified team.
The dog goes home with you at night and is part of your family and then I also take them to work. So, we're together all day, every day, in some capacity.
Working closely with their human counterparts, Lenz and Bono are ready to help take a bite out of crime in Gilbert.
I'm definitely excited.
This is Gilbert Digital.
I want to just share one little tidbit. I actually had the very fortunate privilege to be in a car with Chucky and I got to see Chucky work. I will tell you, you do not want anything in your car that's illegal because Chucky will find it and then your car might be in little pieces after Chucky gets done with that. And then, Mayor Lewis, I think we found a new job for our town manager to be maybe one of those individuals that, as Pat is, he runs around the field. I think we ought to add that to your job description. With that, can we have a round of applause for our canine units? Thank you.
Did we get all the pictures we needed? Okay, good. Well, just so the town manager knows, Chucky and others have been trained to really like mayors. But town manager, okay, let's continue. Agenda item number two, Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, we're going to take a second and talk about an important, important effort that's going on in our country and I wanted to call up Lamont Yoder with Banner MD Anderson to be a part of this. Thank you so much for being here. What we're going to talk about briefly here is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I guess before we get to the proclamation, did you have anything you'd want to share with us as one who knows from the cancer center?
I can just share that the importance and the awareness and your help in the town of Gilbert, helping us make the awareness in our, in our community about how important integrative medicine and wellness and awareness and prevention is and how important it is for our, our communities to understand the importance in collaborating together with all the efforts and those that support this is really helpful for us to get the word out to everyone. And there's the, the impact of the journey in cancer that children in our community are having today, thanks to the partnership with the town of Gilbert and bringing unprecedented cancer care available in our community is just so appreciative and that would not be possible if it were not for the efforts in your partnership and collaboration with us. So, we're thankful for that and thankful for the recognition to help us make this awareness for our community, so.
Well, thank you so much and you guys truly are a jewel in our community and we treasure having you there, so thank you for that. And of course, early detection is so key, awareness really is something we need to work on. So, just in brief here, whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And the American, whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Phoenix Children's Hospital as well as participating hospitals like Banner MD Anderson throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim September 2014 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
All right, we want to invite up Coach Schmidt and the 10 and 11-year-old State Girls Softball Champions. Come on up, girls. All right, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Coach Schmidt, who will introduce his players or pass the microphone down and tell us just a little bit about this season.
First off, thank you for having us. It's a great honor to be here. It's great to see everybody supporting the, the girls. I'm Brian Schmidt, was fortunate enough to be manager of this team along with fellow coaches Trevor Walker and Brian Hinckley. The girls went through about seven weeks of summer of a few different tournaments and ultimately won the Arizona State Championship at the 10 and 11-year-old division. And it was a great honor to be there. We're, we're proud of support and represent Gilbert and it wouldn't have been done without the support of the town, our league and especially the parents of these young ladies. So, with that, I'd like the girls to introduce themselves as we go down.
Hi, I'm Anisia Gomez and I played outfield for the Gilbert All-Stars.
I'm Adriana Nguyen and I played in outfield.
I'm Sidney Babic and I put, I pitched for the All-Stars.
I'm Kenzie Cox and I played right and left field.
I'm Samantha Holbert and I played third in outfield.
I'm Lila Gathon and I play shortstop.
I'm Haley Sweet and I played second.
I'm Morgan Schmidt and I played second.
I'm Kirsten Kalija and I played catcher.
I'm Maya Hinckley and I played first base.
I'm Mia Duke and I played second base.
I'm Victoria Sanchez and I played third base.
I'm Savannah Walker and I played the outfield.
This is Coach Brian Hinckley.
Coach Trevor Walker.
Let's give them one more round of applause as our state champions. Thank you so much for coming, we appreciate it.
Gilbert is truly a championship town and we'd like to invite our 11 and 12-year-old All-Stars to come up. This is another very impressive team, very impressive bunch of ladies and they have done some neat things. I'm going to let the manager here, Al Vega, tell you a little bit about it, but just in the little bit I've read and understood, there were no hitters, there were shutouts, home runs, all sorts of amazing things as you went around the state basically decimating your opponents and then representing us really well in the regional championships over in California as well. So, why don't you tell us a little bit about it?
Absolutely. First of all, we had our own person keeping scores, so she wrote down a lot of no hitters. I want to thank the council and also the mayor because he does support us and we know the community supports us every time. And again, our sponsorships through the league and through the travel we did this summer. I've had the fortune to manage this team for the last four years. They were nine and 10 state runner-ups, district champions. They were 10 and 11-year-old state champions, district champions. And this year, we had a goal, we had a dream. We fell short, we got to represent Arizona after winning district and state championships again. I told the girls, if we would win state, I would probably not coach again. Well, that's not going to happen. We played four games of state and we represented Arizona, we went 2-2. As a manager, I am just so fortunate to be part of this young lady, this group of kids and coaching staff. I have a trainer, which is Randy Chaddick, that gave a lot of effort to these kids. I have a pitching coach, which is Alexis Vega hyphen Chaddick now. And I have a manager that's been by my side for the last four years and also the VP of the league. So, I've been fortunate and blessed by a great group of young ladies and I'm going to tell you something, it was a lot of fun, it was a lot of hard work, a lot of hours were put in. And again, I want to tell you that these young ladies will represent our league, our community, their schools and continue to be leaders in the community. We also received for Western Regional, the, the team, this is fun up here. We received, we received, I received Manager of the Year and then we also received most sportsmanship for the Western Regional, which is voted by media, ESPN and colleagues of other teams and umpires. And I will introduce my, what are you, assistant coach?
Yeah, your assistant coach, Vice President Dan Prefac.
I'm Cassandra Montano, I played left field and pitcher.
I'm Shelby Robinson and I played the outfield.
I'm Sky Shippy and I play centerfield.
I'm Samantha Gorga and I play first and second.
I'm Tatum Melles and I played second and shortstop.
I'm Shelby Sheffner and I played outfield.
I'm Shannon Shiber and I played third base.
I'm Kenna Prefac and I played pitcher and first.
I'm Miranda Alvarez and I played left field.
My name is Allison Hall and my position is catcher.
I'm Nia Bachmann and I played right and left field.
I'm Brooke Vega-Chaddick and I was the pitching coach.
Randy Chaddick, trainer.
Wonderful, congratulations, let's get a picture.
Is there taller than I am?
Squished together there, ladies, pretend like you like each other. Mayor, there's, Manager Vega has one other presentation he would like to make. Mayor, if you'll stay right, right up here.
We would like to present you with a pitcher so you can throw dunks at these young ladies. Thank you.
To our softball players, if you're able to stay, if you can stay for a couple more minutes, we've got one more special event that will take place after our next agenda item, Councilmember Daniels, that you'll be interested in. And this one too.
Thank you. Mr. Wang, would you please come forward with your delegation? We're so pleased to have members of the Vietnamese-American Association of Arizona here tonight and we have a special proclamation for them and a neat announcement that we'd like to move forward with as well. So, I'll read this quickly. It says, "Whereas, there are a number of Vietnamese-Americans who have chosen to make the town of Gilbert their home. And whereas, Vietnamese-Americans have brought in Vietnamese customs and traditions which have been passed down through generations. And whereas, Gilbert's Vietnamese-American community has made substantial contributions to the cultural, religious, political and business life in the town of Gilbert. And whereas, the town of Gilbert was informed that the vast majority of Gilbert's Vietnamese-Americans embrace the yellow and red striped heritage and freedom flag as the symbol of the Vietnamese-American community. And whereas, dating back to 1948, the freedom and heritage flag has a long history in Vietnam and is a broad symbol of resilience, freedom and democracy. And now therefore, on behalf of Mayor John W. Lewis, we do hereby recognize and honor the Vietnamese-American heritage and freedom flag and on this day in August 2014." Thank you. And I'm going to pass the microphone here to Mr. Wang as well and allow him to say a few words on behalf of his community.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to send a very special thank you to the mayor of the city of Gilbert and the councilmen here in the city of Gilbert. My name's Kevin Deng, I'm the president of the Vietnamese community and along with me are the Vietnam veterans, Mr. Nguyen, Dr. Nguyen and Ms. Lam Boi and Ms. Tao Tran, she is a resident here in the city of Gilbert. And I just want to briefly share with everyone who are residing in this beautiful city that the Vietnamese community is, we are your new neighbors because the war ended about 40 years ago and the Vietnamese community, especially in Arizona, had recently established. But we come to this country with a wealth of knowledge and with a wealth of history with us. We bring with us our culture and our history and our tradition. And it is our dream to establish a strong partnership with the Gilbert residents and a strong collaboration with the Gilbert residents here. So, again, thank you so much, everyone, all of the Gilbert residents along with the mayor and the councilmen for recognizing our flag. And we don't, I don't have one with me, but as you see, this is the pin, it's a yellow flag with three red stripes. This used to be a flag representing South Vietnam during the war, during the Vietnam War. When the war ended in 1975, our Vietnamese refugees, we came to this country barehanded. We have nothing, we have no assets, nothing whatsoever but our flag. And all these veterans standing next to me, they have fought courageously for this flag and this flag forever represents freedom and democracy. Although there's no freedom and democracy in Vietnam right now, but it is our aspiration and our dream to bring back democracy and freedom to our motherland sometime soon in the near future. Thank you very much.
And as many probably already know, the town of Gilbert was made a commemorative city to remember the Vietnam War. And so, over the next three years, from the years 2015 to 2017, we'll be holding many events in order to commemorate that war and to celebrate our veterans and we'll be working diligently for that. So, look for more announcements and more partnerships between us and the Vietnamese community as we move forward. Thanks.
Thank you for all who have been here for the proclamations and we have at the end of the agenda, an item that says current events from the mayor. And I'm going to move that up right now, especially with our All-Stars here and thank you for that wonderful picture and thank you for representing Gilbert. I was given a special assignment several months ago and it took place on August the 1st. You will appreciate this, that yes, there were days that I loved playing softball and baseball, but I was a little bit out of practice. And so, we're going to show you a short video of what happened where I was asked to represent Gilbert. And while we're showing the video, Gary and Bruce, if you could make your way down right next to Kurt and the video may begin.
I'm Bruce Hurst, I played for the Boston Red Sox, San Diego Padres from 1980 to 1994.
I'm Gary Christensen, I played with the Kansas City Royals in 1979 and 80.
We're both Gilbert residents.
And we're here to help Mayor Lewis throw out the ceremonial first pitch later this month at the Chicago White Sox game.
You seen Mayor Lewis?
Where is that Mayor Lewis?
Is he wearing a suit? Coach Gary, Coach Bruce!
Mayor Lewis!
Thanks for coming!
Mayor Lewis, nice to see you!
I'm ready, let's do it!
Chicago White Sox great Tom Seaver was the dip and drive type of pitcher, what do you think, Bruce? I think it's a great idea, Gary. All right, Mayor, let's see what you got, Tom Seaver, dip and drive.
Dip and drive.
It's like Tom Seaver. We used to call him Tom Terrific, but that wasn't very terrific.
No, it was a little bit low.
Maybe a little low.
Can we aim a little bit higher? A little higher, okay. Yeah.
Well, I got an idea, maybe. Maybe you ought to lose that jacket, you look like a mayor. Let's, let's see if you can take your jacket off, see if that might help.
Let's get this jacket off, that'll probably be a big help. Let's get committed to this, John.
So, a little bit higher, a little bit higher.
Is that too high? Oh, is that too high?
Yeah, that might have been a little too high.
A little bit too high. I don't think you're ready, Mayor. I think, I think maybe... Well, how am I gonna... I need to get ready. Change your gear?
I don't think you change your gear. I mean, if you want to do this, you gotta look like a ballplayer. You gotta act like a ballplayer.
All right, I'll be right back.
You gotta be a ballplayer.
I'll be right back. I can do it. I'll do it. You can do it. Coach Gary, Coach Bruce, you told me I need to look like a ballplayer and act like one. How do I look?
I think you've done great. You look just like a ballplayer. Nice work. You look great. Look like you're ready.
Good, all right. I think we need one more thing, Bruce.
Oh, really? Good idea, Gary. Yeah, you look like a ballplayer.
I look like a ballplayer? You'll look great, Mayor. All right, let's do it! Dip and drive. Dip and drive, another Tom Seaver?
Another Tom Seaver.
Tom Seaver.
Dip and drive.
Here it goes. Great. Low strike zone right there. Strike three. I look like a ballplayer. I act like a ballplayer. I'm ready. I'm off to Chicago. See ya!
Good luck, Mayor.
Coach Gary and Coach Bruce, could you please come up here? To our All-Stars, we have two more All-Stars to my left. And I needed some help. It'd been a few years. I told them when I was in Little League, I used to try and do a Juan Marcial pitch. And that wasn't quite going to work out for this. But it was a great experience. And in representing Saint Xavier University, which will be located in downtown Gilbert soon, they're in Chicago. And they asked me to represent not only our softball All-Stars, but all of Gilbert. And these two came down and helped me get ready for that. So we are presenting to them. Now, it could be an Academy Award, but in this case, it's the Academy Award Coaching Certificate of Appreciation and goes on to list both their names and the specifics of going above and beyond to give coaching tips and to help me also build confidence to be on a mound that is 60 feet, 6 inches away from the plate. And so if you could give me a big hand in giving Coach Gary and Coach Bruce a nice big round of applause. Yeah, oh, Coach Gary, you wanted to say something too?
Yes, congratulations to the girls and best of luck in high school as you come in the next few years. And there's great programs here in Gilbert. You should have a great opportunity. Congratulations.
And so to our coaches, there's additional specialists that could be helpful if need be. But let's take one pitcher together. Thank you. We move on the agenda to the communication from citizens. Vice Mayor Cook, do we have requests for this part of the agenda?
Well, Mayor, you're so inspiring. I just thank you for representing Gilbert in Chicago. Thank you so very much. We do not have any lucky individuals that want to speak to us tonight.
We will then move to the consent calendar. And what requests we have from the council for the consent calendar?
Mayor, we're going to pull Agenda Items 10 and 16 tonight.
Okay, then for the other items, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve Agenda Items 6 through 9, 11 through 15, and 17 to 22.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. Thank you. Those items are approved. Now, I wanted to recognize, related to Agenda Item Number 13, we have some representatives from APS here. And to Steve Yama Morty and Denise Hutchinson and Ruston Shear, thank you for being here and for this partnership and continuing to serve Gilbert. And we appreciate you. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 10.
Mayor Lewis, we're going to have Councilmember Ray.
So, question for you. It talks about the different pieces of equipment we're buying. And I understand the need to use this partnership for the cheaper cost and that makes sense. I just didn't see anything in the communication as to why we're buying these at this point. Whether it's the old ones are no longer of use or it's just time or what the reason is for the timing.
Mayor Lewis. Mayor Lewis, members of council, these are additions to the fleet, to the solid waste fleet for the bulk trash in town. We got quite a few old ones in there that should have been replaced. They were replaced. And because of the demand on the trucks, they're still being used. They spend a great deal of time in the shops and at a considerable cost. So they're additions that went through the budget process and...
So they're replacing current ones that we're using that are past their lifecycle?
It's technical. They're actually replacing... They're actually additions, but they're replacing vehicles that were replaced that because of the increased demand and workload, they didn't go away. The replaced vehicles didn't go away.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I want to entertain a motion.
Mayor, move that we approve Item 10.
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a seven to vote. Agenda Item Number 16.
Mayor Lewis, we're going to have Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, no discussion on this. Great Rite program. I just think it's the wrong funding source. That was all, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. As we begin the public hearing, what I had communicated to the council and to those that are involved with Agenda Item Number 24 is that we would move that to the end of the meeting. And I'm going to make just a quick change and the council will understand in just a moment. First, let me read what is on the agenda for the public to know. We have three agenda items that are part of the public hearing, Items 23 through 25. And they will be heard at one public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment on a public hearing item may do so. And in order to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. And let me also... Vice Mayor Cook, do we have requests on these three items to speak?
Not really, but I do want to make a comment on Agenda Item 23.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to that. So on Agenda Item 24, I'm going to open the public hearing on Agenda Item 24 and now give this explanation as to our previous plan was to move this to the end. Agenda Item Number 24, the applicant has made a request to continue this item. To the council, we wanted to have just a quick explanation of that request. And then, timing wise, we needed to make sure that we made certain deadlines because of the focus of what is being requested here. And so could we have a member of town staff give us that quick overview and why the council potentially should continue... Should consider continuing this item? Catherine, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council members. I believe the applicant is requesting a continuance to the September 11th meeting simply to provide more information or evidence concerning this matter. We are certainly prepared tonight to give you a brief presentation and overview on the project. So it is certainly at your discretion.
Thank you. For the council, there may be a concern that we need to do it tonight to meet a deadline. Can you speak to that, please?
Within the... Yes, Mayor Lewis, within the code, there is a requirement that you conduct a public hearing within 60 days of receiving the appeal request. So we are well within that timeframe. And if you continue to the September 11th, that'll be the 59th day.
Thank you. To the council, I have not discussed this with you. And so I will tell you some discussions this afternoon with our town attorney's office that there was a lot of information. We did have a chance in an executive session to receive a briefing. And so my assumption is that we're prepared. And we did have a chance to review the materials. Because the applicant is the one who is requesting that the council consider, our town attorney's office has said that they're supportive, especially because we do meet that window of time. But at the same time, if we're ready to proceed, we can. But I... That's why I wanted to open the public hearing at this point, because we have many people who are here. And rather than wait till the end, if we choose to continue it, we could make that decision now. And if we decide to continue it tonight, then we'll still move it to the end of the meeting. So do you have any questions you would like to ask or any feelings you would like to give?
Mayor, members of the council, the person requesting the continuance ought to be allowed to explain why he thinks the continuance is essential for his preparation.
And is that individual here? Okay, thank you. Would that help to have that... Okay, thank you. And to our town attorney, often when we have an applicant like this come to the mic, we give a timeframe. Is three minutes sufficient time to give an explanation as to why?
That would be sufficient, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant could come forward. And when we have a public hearing like this, you're also asked to state your name. And for the record, if you're a Gilbert resident, and then you'll be given three minutes to let the council know why you would like this item to be continued.
Duke Rodriguez on behalf of Ultra Health, Scottsdale, Arizona. I've got for you... Might make it a lot quicker if you would like someone to pass this out to the council members and the mayor, please. It's an affidavit by council. And very quickly, what the affidavit was filed with the courts today. This is a very complex legal issue and requires a lot of material and a certain amount of discovery because it relates to a few key principles who apparently caused this issue to come up for consideration. This affidavit, if you have a chance to read it through... I guess if we only have three minutes, I can't read through the whole document. Basically, it's signed by council. John Ryan representing Ultra Health as lead attorney for Ryan Rapp and Underwood. And basically, we've gone all the way back to April to come to this body and give you a complete history and the depositions through discovery of all of what's gone on. The facts, the depositions, that will clearly set the record as to what did or did not occur. Those depositions have been attempted to be taken. They go back as far back as April 28th. And the parties who've been deposed have repeatedly avoided the process, have shown total disregard for how the system works, and have basically came up with a simple answer, which was, "Ask David." So after about 70 times of stating "Ask David" on the record, we did depose David. He missed the first appointment, or he stood up the deposition the second, first time. We went back to the court. The judge demanded that they appear with documents. That second deposition was taken. They failed to provide any documents and again, not answer questions. The judge has been asked for an emergency hearing. We think that hearing is likely to be tomorrow. And in that emergency hearing, the judge is going to either basically apply sanctions. And we're saying, "You were supposed to deliver documents last week. Your deposition's been pushed back as a professional courtesy to the other party. They wanted August 5th. We thought we'd have it done August 5th." They've now pushed it back to this Friday, August 22nd. So in fact, to this day, we have no documents. We have no discovery. And very likely, if we get granted what the judge is being asked to do, the sanctions we're asking is dismissal of the case. Now hopefully, this matter goes forward. But I can tell you, it's a very complex issue. There are affidavits in here. There are court motions. There are court minutes. And you'll see this, the complexity involved. We're basically saying, "You have the time. There isn't a life and health issue at stake. It would be wise to gather all the information and make the best decision possible."
Thank you. To our town attorney, who will give just a moment to... To our town attorney, if you could give us some help. I realize that we have not passed out that information yet because we're not really a council to be looking at the legal issues. There's a very specific issue that we're asked to look at. And so if you could give us some direction on what you've just received.
Yes, Mayor and council, what I have before me is an affidavit from an attorney essentially outlining the process and the history with regards to efforts to depose the other side in this matter, as well as a explanation as to the complexity involved in this thing. I guess the question that I... Or that I would want to have explained is, what is it that a continuance would give the applicant an opportunity to provide relevant information to whether who's the holder of the appropriate certificate?
Okay. Would, as you're counseling with the town council, would you like that question to be posed?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Please.
Mr. Rodriguez, the... The information presented here is that you cannot... As you've been unable to depose the persons involved, I guess I'm not clear as to why that's relevant to whether or not you hold a certificate issued by the Department of Health Services. Mr. Rodriguez, you understand that question?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe, I think I understand the question. I'm certainly not the attorney to answer it specifically. Council was expecting this agenda item to come later. So, you know, I can just give you what I understand. There is a significant number of discovery documents, and I think the number exceeds 50 or 60 documents. Those 50 documents specifically talk about the history of this Gilbert location, how the conditional use permit, the design review permit was granted, the participants, including the Sanchez's and their role, and their consent to having that license and that permit granted for this location, including their roles with the Department of Health Services. I don't want to give out our entire discovery or attorney's questioning, but basically, it will provide all the meat and potatoes that will give you the facts to basically say, "This is the money that was invested. These were the original parties. These were their intent, both written and oral, that would basically establish who holds the license and how the Department of Health Services got involved." It's a very complex issue, and I don't think I could answer it completely. But that gives you kind of an overview of why there is such an important part of discovery. And again, to this point, we have received no documents. So I can't tell you without receiving any documents, council does not feel like it can proceed and provide, which is basically, as an attorney, is part of the discovery process and has not been honored.
Thank you. So at this point, council, there's a request to continue. And I'll ask our town attorney to give any other thoughts that would be helpful. And we'll have a quick discussion on that and make that decision.
The mayor, members of the council, the documents concerning the litigation he has with his opponents in this case is... Is such that, well, it may or may not be relevant. He's made a representation that his attorney cannot adequately represent him unless he has the opportunity to have this matter continued and have those documents secured, if they exist, and if possible. Of course, his attorney's not here to make that representation. But his attorney's not here because this matter was moved up earlier in the agenda for his benefit. And consequently, we have, you know, the council bending over or trying to accommodate this by moving this, you know, forward, but at the same time, representing that he's disadvantaged because now his attorney's not here. Given the affidavit of the attorney that apparently that seems to suggest that he cannot fully represent or adequately represent or completely represent his client in the absence of this continuance and the fact that it still fits within the days in which the town is required to have the hearing. the town is required to have the hearing, the town attorney sees no reason why it could not be continued if the council was so inclined.
Thank you. Any discussion from the council before we ask for a motion?
Mayor, I might-
And we close it, certainly.
Mayor, I might suggest another thing to see if there's anyone in the audience present who opposes any continuance and the reasons expressed therefore before a vote.
And Vice Mayor Cook has received two requests to speak and so the council should be aware of that. Councilmember Daniels?
I was just going to suggest what our town attorney just did, is see if there's, obviously, there's multiple people involved in an appeal process and all deserve to be able to be heard. Perhaps, my concern at this point is that we move to September 11th and then more time is needed or parties can't come and at that point, the appeal would need to continue. We would have no other dates or date certain, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? So, to Councilmember Daniels, the two that have requested to speak, you'd be fine with them having that opportunity now? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Cook, let's proceed. And I realize to the two that have requested, most likely, your desire was to comment on the matter at hand that the council is asked to review and not so much the continuance, but I think, I am going to ask Vice Mayor Cook to see if you'd like to speak at this point and if so, in a public hearing setting, you're usually given about two minutes apiece. And so, Vice Mayor Cook.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome Kathy Sanchez to the podium if she would like to speak.
And Kathy, as you're coming forward, I realize that you had wished to speak when we are opening up the discussion and right now, we're just talking about whether to continue the matter. And so, did you wish to speak on that question?
I believe it would pertain to it.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, for the record, then state your name and if you're a Gilbert resident and then you'll be given two minutes to speak, please.
Kathy Sanchez, Gilbert, Arizona. I am the licensee, the principal of East Valley Wellness Patient Center. I hired Mr. Rodriguez as a realtor. He doesn't, can't answer the question you just asked him because he's not the license holder. I don't see any reason why we should move this meeting on and we should address it right now because he's not going to answer that question because he's not the license holder. I hired him as a realtor. I have no contracts with him. I have signed no contracts with him. There is nothing he has from me.
Thank you.
Mayor, you might, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but you might ask her, might be asked of Ms. Sanchez, that if this matter's continued, it'll be continued till September 11th and if, you know, perhaps how far she's traveled to get here or her ability to attend on that date.
Thank you. We do appreciate you being here and making the effort. If we did continue it, are you able to attend on September 11th?
I would have to check my schedule. From what I know now, I would be able to make it. I do live in Gilbert. I just do care for my elderly parents that live in New Mexico from time to time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cook, please.
Mayor, we'd like to welcome David Sanchez to the podium if he would like to speak as well.
David Sanchez, Tempe, Arizona. I just wanted to get up to say that the, what Mr. Rodriguez is referencing, the deposition that has been scheduled, it's mine. It's my deposition. The deposition for Kathy Sanchez has already been done, been taken care of. Any documents that they're asking me to produce is almost, can't happen because I'm not a part, I am not a member, I'm not a manager of East Valley Patient Wellness Group. I'm not a, I hold no office in any capacity of that. Mr. Rodriguez has tactics of business from day one, just to keep extending it. That's why we went from 30 days to 60 days and now we're looking at another 30 days, which would be another 90 days. It's just jeopardizing the ability to move forward and open up the dispensary location. As Kathy did state, she has no agreement, there is no authorization with them. No document that I'm going to ask to provide at the deposition has any reference at all to Mr. Rodriguez having any authorization contract or anything whatsoever like that. So, the way we sit right now, it's just stall tactics again. There's no contract, no authorization out there and it would hamper our ability to move forward with a project, which it already has for the last 60 to 90 days. We've provided, and I still have the documentation here directly from Department of Health Services that does list Kathy Sanchez as the principal officer of East Valley, nobody else. I'm sorry, it's Candace Morales is also on there with her. But there is no agreement, there's no need to extend, there really isn't. I mean, there's nothing that can be proven at the next council hearing because there's no agreement. There's nothing, absolutely zero with Mr. Rodriguez. And he's just, he's made a habit of just extending these things out and I just think it would be, for our, from our perspective, to try to move forward and to try to conduct business, it's just, it's, it's, it's just, it's been real frustrating for that, for that end of it, so.
Thank you and thank you for coming. And so, your travel distance was from Tempe. Same question that was asked of Kathy, if this is continued to September 11th, would you be able to attend as far as you know?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're still open on this particular topic. Any feelings from the council? Councilmember Peterson?
Just had a quick question. If we proceeded with the hearing, if at the end of it, we believe we need more facts to make a decision, could we continue it at that point?
Mayor, Councilman Peterson, yes, that could happen.
I'm not saying we'll feel that way. Maybe we will, maybe we won't, but it's always an option after we hear the facts.
So, would you be inclined to just proceed with discussion tonight? Okay, other feelings? Councilmember Cooper?
I don't mind going forward tonight, but I might recommend that we continue with the way you had the agenda originally outlined and-
And move it to the end?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor, I would like to continue tonight and vote.
Okay, you would like to have a vote right now to continue it?
No, vote to, as it relates to the agenda item.
Okay, so you'd like to, you'd like to have the discussion tonight?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing on Agenda Item 24 and we're going to go back with the original plan and we will, in just a moment, open 23 and continue on and move 24 to the end, as was explained to the parties, various reasons for that, because we had people coming from different parts of the valley. And so, I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 23 and will ask for a report from town staff. Yes, Vice Mayor Cook, please.
I just want to make a comment-
About 23?
About 23, tonight. This particular intersection or corner has been a tremendous eyesore for the community and I've lived in this neighborhood for a long time and I'm actually looking forward to this project moving forward because it's going to bring a sense of relief to the neighbors, both at the islands and also both north of the islands. So, I just want to let everyone know that I'm very much in favor of moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
Well, I would like-
Oh, you don't need any discussion, is what you're saying? Okay. I might be slightly slow tonight, but I, you know, I get help from both sides, that works. So, I'm looking to my right, I'm looking to my left and council members, you don't feel that you need to have a presentation, okay? So, I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 23 and Vice Mayor Cook's ready to make a motion.
And Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item Number 23.
Second.
With that motion seconded, please vote. Let's approve with a seven vote, thank you. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 25 and council members, did we need to have any discussion on 25?
Mayor, I had some items on that.
Would you like to ask questions or should we have a short presentation?
It's up to you. I just have some questions.
Okay. I heard question, question, but for the public, if you could at least, Melanie, give a brief overview about what Agenda Item 25 is and then we'll move right to the questions.
Mayor, councilmembers, Melanie Dykstra, Parks and Recreation Management Support Analyst. The Agenda Item Number 25 is an ordinance amending the Code of Gilbert, Chapter 46, Parks and Recreation. So, what we've done is gone through our current municipal code and done some cleanup with some of the language in there, such as, some of the sections had it listed as community services, our department name is now Parks and Recreation. So, we've highlighted some of those changes. We've looked specifically at some of the languages in terms of allowing the director to waive fees, which matches our Chapter 15 Special Events. In addition, we have codified some of the dog park rules. They are rules posted at the park, but this puts them in the municipal code for additional enforcement opportunities. And we do change some of the length of our suspension of persons from the parks in order to comply with some current practices. And so, those are some of the highlights of the changes that we have, so many of it is some cleanup of our basic information.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, some questions, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Melanie, we talked earlier, this is for everyone's benefit, it's on, oh, the page numbers are not here, darn. It's under Section 46-41 and there's a new section being proposed where it says, "No persons shall conduct business within a public park" and so on. Did you, were you able to come up with the definition of "conduct business"? We talked before, I mean, if, you know, two people want to meet in the park and have a business lunch together, I mean, that's fine. I don't see a problem with that. Really, anything that doesn't interfere with the intent of our park for people to be able to recreate and use it as it was intended, I would be okay with as well. So, I'm just concerned with how we're defining "conduct business." I don't want to unnecessarily limit people's use of our parks.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, it is defined in Chapter 14 of the Business Section, so business is defined as means these activities or acts engaged in or caused to be engaged in with the object of gain, benefit, or advantage, or consideration, either directly or indirectly, and shall include any trade, game, or amusement, calling, profession, occupation, or performance of services, whether engaged in for profit or not for profit. So, that's the definition of business and "conduct" means to commence, manage, own, solicit, canvas, practice, transact, engage in, or carry on. So, that would be the definition, since we are referencing that they would be in compliance with 14-1 as well, or it's defined in 14-1 and we're asking that they comply with Chapter 14 of the municipal code, which it actually already references in that chapter. This is kind of a cross-referencing opportunity that we've taken in which transient merchants are also required, it's unlawful for any licensee under the article to conduct business in the parks, so it's already similarly defined in there. And so, we basically, we're kind of cross-referencing the chapters together to identify that within Chapter 14, there is already some regulations based on conducting business in the parks.
So, are you saying this section of code doesn't really change whether or not it's allowed?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, correct. It identifies it specifically as a highlight more in this code to cross-reference it to Chapter 14, but Chapter 14 already identifies that you're not allowed to conduct business in the parks. It does identify the fact that the location, you cannot, you have to, you can't do it without having a permit within 300 feet of the park or within the park without a license or a permit.
So, I mean, do we need to add this if it's already, I mean, why make it illegal twice, you know?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we did add in two words, which is Recreation Facility or Repairian Area. We also said approval from the town, although Chapter 14 does say specifically Parks and Recreation Director and it does not reference Recreation Facility or Repairian Area, it does just limit it to public park.
So, we are expanding the areas that it's illegal to conduct business in?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, in essence, yes. We're making it comply with the entire chapter that we have because we do reference recreational facilities and repairian areas as part of Chapter 46.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware of our current policy with parks. I personally feel that the way we're defining "conduct business" is too broad. I think we're excluding too many activities with that, but, so that's a concern I'll just throw out there, that was one. But I don't know if there's any further discussion from others on that, but I have a few other questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilmember Taylor?
I have comments, not questions.
Comments, please.
Okay, I had some good discussion with Melanie earlier, so I'll just generally tell you that the Parks Board did some good work on this. There's a lot of good things in here. Three things that I would just like to see to improve it would be similar there is make it a little more business friendly. If someone wants to come and do a little business in the park, I think we should clarify the things that make sense and don't a little bit better because Melanie and Rod had some really good suggestions and I think some additional wording would just help clarify that, make that a little bit more friendly to what we're trying to do. Number two is, I don't know if everybody's with me on this one here, but there's a prohibition on ice blocking and water slides. I wouldn't mind if that goes away. I understand what it does to our grass, but it doesn't do anything more to our grass than all the, all the activity that we have programmed on the grass. I don't know that it's going to be abusing. If it is, then certainly, we can come back and revisit that. So, I would be supportive of striking that, which is 43-40, excuse me, 46-43.
On that comment, actually, there was some discussion maybe a couple of years ago about creating specific areas where ice blocking could be done or writing down cardboard or other types of activities like that. Has that discussion gone any further?
Mayor, Councilmember Daniels, we have not had anything specific within this past year. In the examination of ice blocking, in essence, it does take the grass out by the roots, so it is not something that can regrow very easily and we do struggle with the grass already on the berms. They are used as an erosion control currently. The discussion moving forward is when we do develop a new park is whether or not some different opportunities there are on the berms to provide for something, you know, for that type of activity, but currently, we aren't able to sustain that type of activity without damage to the park areas.
Thank you. And Mayor, just my last point here is relative to 46-49, the Park Ranger. In talking with Melanie and Rod, the, I want to just read you the wording here. I think that could be improved just a little bit. It says, "Gilbert Park Rangers shall have authority to issue citations or to file civil code infraction complaints for violations of this article and other ordinances." My recommendation, I know in the definition section, that's not in the packet, there is some circumscription on the limit of the authority of the Park Rangers. I think if we just add, "And other Parks and Rec ordinances there," then it's very clear to someone reading this section that their authority is limited to the ordinances here in the Parks and Rec. They don't have authority to issue citations, you know, outside of this for sign codes or other things like that. Just some wording clarification on that.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, I did speak with Mike Campbell about that and we couldn't, we can clarify that and bring that back in our next changes if that is okay.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor Cook?
Melanie, I would like to talk about the geocash as relates to the physical geocash. The, you know, obviously, they will try to dig a hole, plant it in the ground, you know, and I'm reading here about the different locations. So, are we allowing geocaching to happen in our parks then, based upon the list that I see here?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, in general, yes, we do allow geocaching. It does have basic, and I apologize for not providing you with maybe the original, but we do identify what you can and cannot do with geocaching. You can't destroy property, you can't, you know, inhibit some other areas. We did make it more specific to not having it located in the repairian and make that more of a virtual geocaching, just because of more of the nature of that area, but the rest of it, there are some parameters in place for how you can conduct geocaching in general in our other park areas, which we do have and we actually are okay with that activity when people follow within the rules that we do have on how to properly place one and not damage, you know, the area that they're in.
Okay. So, Councilmember Taylor, you had a few suggestions. Do we have any other council members that felt good about those suggestions or wanted to comment? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I totally agree with Councilmember Taylor on being a little more business friendly, which is kind of the point of I was making previously on that. And just by the definition she read, I don't think you could even meet somebody in the park for lunch if you had any intention of engaging in a business deal sometime in the future after that. I just, I just think it's overly restrictive. And to his other, the only point I, I'm all about letting people do as much as possible in the park, but I am concerned with the ice blocking. I just think it does damage that's hard to fix. I mean- I mean, I don't know. From what I'm hearing, it really does damage beyond other activities we'll do. So that may be one, I'm not sure I'm on the same page with. And then as far as the enforcement authority with the Park Rangers, I would really prefer, and Melanie was generous enough to offer, striking that addition for now. And I mainly because of, for me, Fourth Amendment is a big deal, and when we're talking about, you know, asking people to give their full true name and so on and so forth, you know, I think about the right to be secure in your person, houses, papers, and effects, and I just, we have police officers who are well-trained to understand how to both enforce the law but also honor the rights of our citizens as they do it. I just want to make sure I understand what kind of training, you know, and obligations we bind our Park Rangers to before we give them authority to do these kinds of things. And so I would prefer if we could just remove that one for now. I think the others we could kind of work through. Although, there was one last item I just wanted to mention, and maybe, maybe the law already provides for this, but under the Protection of Animals and Wildlife Section, Section 46-46, I certainly agree that it should be unlawful to, you know, harass and be an aggressor, if you will, in terms of against the wildlife, especially in our preserves and parks. However, there's a limit to that. If, on the other hand, somehow the animal is the aggressor and you need to take action to defend yourself, I think there should be some provision there that whatever's necessary is, is fine. And if a snake's coming after you, you want to step on it to protect yourself, I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't want to go too far with protecting the wildlife so that we don't have our citizens be able to protect themselves. So those are the only final comments I had.
Thank you. To the council with these comments, I'll look for some help that, to package this together and close the public hearing and vote. We've had a lot of suggestions, and it may be easy or may be hard to put all this together and vote. I'll look for some help because, or it could be that we need to have this packaged and a few changes and present it again. So I, I'll look for some help. Vice Mayor Cook?
Back to the business-friendly aspect. Councilmember Taylor, was that discussion ever done in the Parks Committee? Did you ever bring that up? I'm wondering if you can table that to another meeting and then bring this back up later? Is that a possibility?
Mayor Lewis, thank you, Vice Mayor Cooper. Cook, excuse me, thank you. In talking with Rod and Melanie earlier today, it sounds like there's going to be another wave coming. I'm wondering if what we do here is to just summarize, I'm trying to put a little list together of, let's pass this with maybe one or two exceptions that we're comfortable with. And then, is it November or December that we're going to get the next?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we're planning to bring it back again in December.
Okay, so December, so for example, we can approve all of this, leaving out 46-49, which is the Park Ranger concern, Councilmember Peterson. And then when we come back, then we can have the improved wording on the business-friendly, the Park Ranger could circle back, and then, I don't know if you're comfortable with that way of moving forward, but.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I'm really comfortable with the Park Ranger. We made that as a policy decision to incorporate Park Rangers into our parks. I think that's a separate policy-level discussion. If we want to have a discussion about their training or about their abilities, I think we can have that as a separate policy-level discussion because we've already, we already have many in our parks that have that authority. We're not doing anything different or abnormal. We're continuing on our, on our path with our Rangers, and it's been, it's proven to be a good program. Councilmember Peterson, you might be interested that when I was a young child in Balboa Park, San Diego, I was chased by a goose. There's a photo to prove it. I'm not traumatized, and nothing happened to the goose either. And so I think I'm comfortable with the language that's in here. I think we have to function on some level. We, we understand where we're going here with this. So Mayor, with the exception of the business, which I'm happy to, I guess, kick back to the Parks and Rec Board for more discussion, I'm comfortable with the rest of this ordinance moving forward. I, I do see the merit in what Councilmember Peterson is talking about with conducting business. I think maybe the example goes a little too far, but I think maybe some further language clarification would be helpful. So with that, I would move to approve it when you're ready for closing public hearing.
And ice blocking, you okay?
I love ice blocking, actually. But I understand the reason for the rule. There was conversation several years ago about perhaps putting down some artificial turf. I think it was in Discovery Park, making, there were some clear paths where ice blocking had occurred, and there was that discussion at one point about making some designated areas so that kids and teenagers and youth groups can participate in that type of activity, which can be very fun, so.
So to Councilmember Taylor's comment about some additional items in December, we could ask for some dialogue about ice blocking to see if there could be some designated areas. Because you do have some ice blocking fans on this council. Another one right here. But you'd be ready to proceed now. Councilmember Cooper, you also had your hand raised?
Yes, but I, I think everything's been said. I'm ready to proceed tonight.
Okay. The Park Ranger discussion, any? Councilmember Ray?
My only thought, not my only, the only thought that I'm going to say is, if this, if there's not a big rush to this, I, I'm not a big fan of approving some of it, waiting for December, and then approving some more and maybe taking some away. December's only a couple of months away. If it's, unless Parks and Rec would really like to move forward with this, I'm more inclined to do it all at once instead of doing pieces here and there.
And Mayor, just to follow up, you know, as I heard what Councilmember Taylor was proposing, it's a change to existing code anyway. It's not really, from what I can read on here, something that they're actually proposing that we do. Especially that thing about, "and other ordinances," the clarification as to, that line is already in the code. And so sure, we can look at it, but I, I'm not even sure that's really what's in front of us. I mean, we could tweak it, but what's really in front of us, I think, is the capital letters and the strikeouts from a policy standpoint. So I, I just feel like we can just go ahead and get this in place, and then if there are some tweaking, there's always tweaking in code. And so you wait now, there'll be something that follows that three months later anyway. I mean, that's, we're just always tweaking our code as we learn and grow.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 25 and will entertain a motion.
Mayor Lewis, I move to approve the ordinance as presented, with the exception of, help me out with the section, Councilmember, what? 46-41, that's the business one? With the exception of 46-41, to which I would like to continue that item for further discussion with the Parks Board.
Second? Okay, with that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. And Councilmember Taylor, thank you for your continued leadership with the Parks Board and in the last few minutes. Appreciate it. We move to agenda. We have finished the public hearing items with the plan to come back to 24, and so we moved to Agenda Item 26. The reason, as I stated at the start of tonight's council meeting, that we're meeting on Monday at an earlier time, is because this is our week for the annual League of Cities Conference, which we will be attending on the next few days, and so we're not able to have a council meeting this Thursday. As, well, let me just stop and Leah, if you can introduce yourself and then tie that into Agenda Item 26 and why we're having this discussion, please.
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, Leah Hubbard Reinhimer, Intergovernmental Relations Director for the Town of Gilbert. As you stated, we've got the, I believe, 19th Annual Conference for the League of Cities and Towns starting tomorrow, and a part of that process is the League Resolutions Committee, which considers proposals from various municipalities to formulate potential, to potentially formulate legislation for the upcoming legislative session. So Mayor Lewis, you served on the League Resolution Subcommittee earlier this summer in reviewing these proposed resolutions, and you'll be voting on them along with 90 other mayors and council representatives tomorrow.
Thank you. And as both of us have said, feedback from the council will be appreciated, and so that's why this agenda is in front of us tonight. As the council's had a chance to review some of the items that I will be discussing with the other 90 mayors tomorrow, do you have feedback that you would like to provide? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, as I've reviewed this and spoken with our, with Leah Hubbard Reinhimer, so I could say all that in one breath, she's been great to teach me some things about this, and one of the things I appreciate is, there's one item here in particular that we're really pushing for as a town, and it's one I agree with. And so other than that, I appreciate the information and being kept in the loop, and I know we're not being asked to, to give an official position on, on the rest of them. And so with that, I'm, I'm comfortable with our direction.
Leah, it would help, from a public perspective, there are one or two items of great importance to Gilbert. Could you give a summary of those?
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, of the proposed resolutions, there are two of particular significance to the Town of Gilbert. Resolution number eight is a resolution that mirrors legislation that has been run in previous mid-decades, which would enable cities and towns to update their population via methods other than a full-blown census, which is extremely costly and time-consuming. So in previous mid-decades, cities and towns had the option to update their population by using updated DES numbers or performing other types of statistical surveys. And the purpose of updating their population is shared revenue. Shared revenue, the premise of shared revenue is that it follows the bodies. So when a city or town grows, they should receive additional shared revenue to cover the costs that go with an increased population, strains on infrastructure, et cetera. So in every 10 years, cities and towns update their populations via a full-blown census. Cities and towns have an option in the mid-decade to do something similar. So this Resolution Eight would mirror previous mid-decade legislation run in previous mid-decades. And then I can move on to another one unless council has questions.
Please.
Resolution number... Sorry, I'm sorry, that was Resolution, gosh, is it 17?
That was eight, so 17, I think, is the other one.
Going off of memory. Resolution number 17 is very near and dear to the Town of Gilbert. That would permanently codify in statute our ability to calculate the threshold for victory in council elections. We were able to get a temporary fix in the legislature thanks to our local delegation, and this would codify that permanently.
Thank you. So back to the council as a whole, in addition to those two items, any feedback you would like to provide? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I'll just give you the numbers that I'm supporting in addition to those two, because definitely support those and however you want to process that. Number six, which is the turf funding. Number 10 is the restoring state parks fund. 14 is reducing requirements for annexation. Obviously, there's a ton of details in there, but I think the discussion is very much worthwhile and germane to our town. We talked about 18 and 21. 18 is the state park maintenance, and then 21 is supporting preservation of our current military installations.
I will do, as I've done in past years, my very best to represent Gilbert and appreciate the feedback. If there's additional comments that you would like to share, please reach out to either myself or to Leah. Agenda Item 27, Boards, Commissions, and Committees Report from Councilmembers. Do we have any? Agenda Item 28 is a policy item regarding the Gilbert Road banner and banners on street poles. Any discussion we would like to have, or would we like to have a short presentation? Councilmember Taylor?
Do you like a short presentation?
Okay. We request a short presentation.
Mayor, councilmembers, this policy relates to the banner that goes across Gilbert Road. It was installed in 2005 with an original policy, and since then, there's been a couple updates and changes to the policy. The last department that was authorized to do the reservations for the banner was Development Services. That torch has been passed to the Parks and Recreation Department, and therefore, that's one of the reasons we're bringing this policy to you is to update the department transaction. However, as you'll notice in the policy, we've made it as terms of the authorized town department, so in the future, if it does move around, that it doesn't necessarily need to come back to the council for a policy decision on the department. It is what will work best for the town. In addition, in the past, the, the policy also had a lot of procedures in it, and we have now generally identified the policy portions of the Gilbert Road banner, and that's what you're seeing tonight.
Thank you. Discussion or questions or comments? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. So Melanie, my question is about the limit of four weeks in a year. When I added up the bookings from the prior year, there was, I don't know, about half the year seemed, seemed available. I wonder, maybe you can give us, why do we have a limit when it doesn't seem like there's full schedule? Maybe I was misreading that, but.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, in the past, some of the weeks may not have been used. Anytime they are not used, the Shop Gilbert banner does get installed during those times. Obviously, we also schedule in the town activities prior to use. However, we have already, through the calendar year of 2014, actually almost booked every of the two weeks solid. We do feel having the management in the Parks and Recreation Department has given it a little more visibility, and we are able to reach out a bit more and, and schedule the banner. And what we were finding is that when we looked back at some records, we did have some businesses that scheduled numerous times, and then some of the prime weeks, there wasn't an opportunity left for some others to, you know, widen the door to, to kind of spread the opportunity to other businesses. So this was our recommendation. I know there was some conversations with Councilmember Peterson indicating, though, to possibly put in some additional language that exceptions may be made or approved by town staff based on availability. So if, for instance, we don't have a reservation on a Monday prior to the next week, and we have someone who's asked maybe to be on a waiting list if that week opens up, or there isn't anyone scheduled, and they've already done their two, that we would be able to take that. So that is language we'd like to consider having added to this and to give us that authority.
Thank you. Makes, makes a lot of sense.
Melanie, one question as I read this for efficiency. We did allow for one week, and we're moving to two weeks, and one reason for that is that every time we change it, there's staff time involved. Would there be, or was there discussion that in addition to this policy, if a group did want just a week and did not want to pay the two weeks $400, but maybe it's the week for $200 plus to cover the expenses of town staff putting up the banner? Is that something that was discussed, or would make sense to discuss?
Mayor, councilmembers, we did discuss that, and we had determined, looking back on the, the general look at the schedule, every organization has reserved in the past, in general, has reserved two weeks at a times. Over the course of time, they may have done one week here, one week there. But again, looking at the effectiveness, efficiency of our staff and the labor it does take to get that banner up and down, we did feel that removing that exception at this time would be the best use of town resources.
And you answered the other question, which was, how is it going? And so it seems like two weeks is what the groups who have been using the banner have requested. So my feeling is we go for it, and then if it's not working, we could come back and change it. Any other feelings? I will entertain a motion then.
Mayor Lewis, I'd like to approve Agenda Item 28.
Is there, is there a second? Oh, please jump in, Melanie.
Can we get it as amended by?
As it amended with the exception in, just so that we can make sure that that language is added.
As amended, with that exception. Second?
Give that motion second, please vote. Let's approve with a seven of a vote. Thank you. We have the last, we have future meetings and then communications, which I think we could still have after we do 24. So let's return to Agenda Item 24, and I reopen the public hearing on Agenda Item 24. As was communicated to the individuals who will be participating in this part of the discussion, we're going to have a town staff overview of Agenda Item 24, and then the applicant has been told that they will have 10 minutes to make a presentation, and then the interested party will also have 10 minutes if they choose to take that long. So we'll begin with that, Agenda Item 24. Now reopen, Catherine, if you can, give us the update, the overview, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and councilmembers. Catherine Lorbeer, principal planner. This item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's action to revoke a conditional use permit. In July of 2013, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary. The dispensary would be located in the light industrial zone on a parcel just a little less than an acre in size. And this is an aerial of the subject site, which is west of Power Road and north of Nunnally. Only one valid dispensary registration certificate is issued by the state in this particular part of the community known as CHAW 77. A valid certificate is required by code and is also a condition of approval. The town received confirmation from the state that the certificate supplied by the applicant was not recognized as valid. And during the Planning Commission public hearing, additional evidence was provided that demonstrated that the applicant was not authorized to rely on the valid certificate. And for that reason, the Planning Commission did pass a motion unanimously to revoke the conditional use permit. Staff is recommending that you uphold the Planning Commission's revocation based on the findings of fact, which are attached to your staff report. And if you are inclined to continue this item, we would ask that you continue it to the September 11th meeting. And that's all I have for you, in case you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? Thank you for that overview. We will now proceed with 10 minutes allocated to the applicant. And that could be multiple parties. And I will look to our town attorney if there was any information you can help us with as to what was communicated, who will be coming forward.
Mayor, per your instruction, council informed both Mr. Rodriguez and the Sancheses, who are an interested party, that you were inclined to provide them with 10 minutes each with three to five minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. We now invite the applicant to come forward.
Mayor, wrap up 30 seconds or a minute? What do you, would you like?
Why don't we do a minute warning? And so in this 10-minute part, when you see the orange-yellow light come on, that means you'll have a minute left. Please, thank you.
Duke Rodriguez, Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm not sure how much detail you want to go into. Or since the last meeting, did you have a chance to go through the binder that was provided to Planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission? As I stated before, this is a very complex issue. And I'm not trying to be negative or cynical about it. You have to understand, we've made great efforts. We've invested probably at a going rate of six figures a month in legal costs. It's not a simple matter. It's very complex. And the amount of detail and the statements, even when the staff reports, I have respect for how the staff reports it, but it's not necessarily factually correct. A lot of changes occurred when these licenses were first awarded. And the award for this CHAW 77 for East Valley, for this specific location, it's included in this binder, which was previously provided to the town of Gilbert. In no case ever does it have the name of Kathy Sanchez or David Sanchez. It has three original members. And those three original members have filed, two of the members at least have filed complaints already that they were wrongfully removed and placed by the Sancheses. Then I heard earlier this evening that this matter was down to being a Realtor, and that's what the relationship they've had with me. I've never been a Realtor for the Sancheses. They cannot deliver in any form, any kind of representation agreement. Never had one, never signed one. We don't represent them in that form. This issue relates to how the contracts were originally issued, who the awardees were, and what happened to these awardees. And how did the Sanches come to evolve to take their places? The Department of Health Services was simply confirmed, this is what the current licenses. Staffs reported that they said that it wasn't A or B. They never said that. What they said is this is the current licensee. And they provide a documentation in here to correct these errors from occurring. There are about 99 CHAWS in this state. And approximately 50 to 80 of them are in litigation for similar matters. People found an opportunity and basically tried to prey upon the original awardees. The original awardees are very specific. Two of them have signed attestations and affidavits in these documents and said, "I am the original awardee. They're my license. I have contracted specifically with UltraHealth." The Sancheses were involved from day one to the award of this facility at this location. What they did is they found a crooked partner in a different state, which is going to be shown through discovery. And that partner offered them money, offered them cash, offered them whatever. And they basically thought they had a better deal. And they hijacked the license. But I can't give it to you in five minutes. It's that complex. We simply set aside earlier in the discussion, the affidavit. A well-respected law firm, Ryan Rappin Underwood, they've worked diligently on these affidavits. They've worked trying to get the documents to support it. These documents do support exactly what the final outcome is. And the important issue is the judge has forced this issue and says, "You have to answer the questions." You just heard Mr. Sanchez come to you and say, "I don't have anything to do with it. The reason I'm not producing documents is I'm not involved." But I can play you a tape from the July 2nd meeting, where he specifically said, "My wife and I are the original owners." That means there's hidden ownership. You heard him say he had nothing to do with it? I'll have you play back the July 2nd transcript in this room, where he says, "I am the owner." You can't have it both ways. We took the deposition of one of the players, Kathy Sanchez. And over 70 times, she says, "I don't know. You have to ask David." But now she comes forth and says, "Oh, he's just a Realtor." That's never been the case. It's a complex issue that goes back to the original time. The licenses were awarded, how the licenses evolved by the original licensees, how the town of Gilbert properly vetted this entire, through their staff. And they saw the licenses at the time. They had the right names on it, and somebody changed it. Has nothing to do whether the conditional use permit is valid. It has to do with contractual issue and people honoring those relationships. It's not a use permit. Nowhere has the use permit been violated in any form. It's a contractual issue. That matter sits before the court. And the court is going to force the issue much sooner than expected. We would be here fully prepared if those obligations before the court were met. And now basically, the court's been asked to dismiss the entire matter against the Sanches because they failed their obligation. It takes me more than 10 minutes to give you all the details. But there are binders. There are binders much larger than this stack here of all the facts. It is a very complex issue. And if I try to give you all the facts, I think I'm only going to confuse you further. But I think it's worthy for you to sit back, ask for the proper information, make a fair, complete judgment based upon all the facts, and you still have time to do it. If I seem frustrated, it's because we haven't been able to get the information. I had to travel a great distance to make tonight. And no complaints, but I'm a parent also. I have a child home at sick, and today happens to be my birthday. But you know, I'm so committed to this because we wanted to make sure the story got told right. It's not a simple matter. Look at the original licensees. If that just causes you enough question, open up the one document. Look at the license that was awarded in August 2012 or 2010. It never included the Sanches. Talk to the original awardees. Ask them why they signed affidavits saying they were defrauded by the Sanches. It's a very confusing situation in 10 minutes. But I can assure you, it requires full evaluation to make the right judgment.
Thank you. Please, continue.
My name is Jeffrey Kaufman from Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm an attorney, and I represent the property owner of this property that is risking losing a great deal of money and basically having close to a worthless property. And that's Zone Properties Inc., a public company that owns that, this piece of property. And I don't think Mr. Rodriguez made it completely clear. Mr. Sanchez has been avoiding answering questions and having his deposition taken and producing documents for over two and a half months now. And we would be here with a transcript of his deposition wherein we believe he would admit that he entered into oral agreements to develop this property and have it be used, the same property that you have already approved as a medical marijuana dispensary and a joint venture. But Mr. Sanchez has evaded being deposed. He's violated court orders. There's another motion before the judge. And Mr. Rodriguez said it backwards. It's Mr. Sanchez's lawsuit that we're trying to get dismissed. And we ask you to continue this matter till your September, early September meeting. I don't think, there certainly wouldn't be any irreparable harm to anyone other than us if you didn't postpone it. And we will come back here, hopefully with Mr. Sanchez's deposition or with a court order that will show you that we're the good guys and the Sancheses are crooks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Town council, any questions or comments you'd like to make at this point? Vice Mayor Cook?
I'd like to ask a question to our town attorney. In our packet, we have, which looks like an official document from the Arizona Department of Health Services, which identifies East Valley Patient Wellness Group as the holder. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook. I'm going to defer the answers to these questions to Assistant Town Counsel, Jack Vincent.
Because there is a registration certificate identification number that they have, I'm assuming it's official number, and there's some dates. It says, "Issue date of August 7th, 2012. Expiration date, August 7th of 2014."
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cook, that's correct. In your packet, you have several versions of that certificate that were presented at different times. Each version bears the same registration number. What changes from time to time is the presence of a DBA UltraHealth in the heading. And also, the expiration dates vary on those certificates. Okay.
Thank you. I had a question, and it would be Mr. Rodriguez. I would ask this too. If you could please return the microphone. This will help as we'll have some time given to the interested party. The comment was made that you were a Realtor, and then you said that was not the relationship. In your words, how would you define the relationship with the Sanchez group?
We are clearly, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee, council, we are the developer. Like any other project that you're routinely accustomed to. Oftentimes, there's a client who wants a facility built. We invested all the capital. We bought the land, we bought the buildings, we hired the architects, we did the engineering work. We are the developer of the item project. We brought the project forward for the licensee. We are the developer.
Okay. And do you have any other comments, realizing, as you said, this is very complicated? And so the council is not going to try and be a court. We're a council. And the specific question that is being asked of us to vote on has to do with what the Planning Commission vote was, and then you've appealed that. And so do you have any other specifics as to why we should consider your request to have the appeal reviewed?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are a number of reasons, including just simply fairness. But there's some practical issues as to cost. I think that if a fair, complete evaluation isn't done, I think we all just basically exacerbate the amount of legal costs going forward. This matter will not just simply go away. People are not going to walk away from the table. There's large dollars at stake. And those dollars do drive the decision as to making sure the right facts and the right decisions are based. Even coming to this meeting, I'm not trying to blame anyone's fault, but even the process of coming to this meeting ended up being completely different than we expected. We got notice about this meeting X number of days. We were forced to post it up there. Then we were told the meeting date was incorrect. People climbed across the fence and manually changed dates on a sign from the town staff. People basically did mailings, which are unaccustomed to by the town of Gilbert. The process seems completely non-traditional. So all these issues will be subject to discovery. Versus trying to rush to judgment, I think it makes a practical sense for the town of Gilbert and for all parties involved to get all the facts in the appropriate amount of time. And as Mr. Kaufman said, there is no damage being done by, especially to the town of Gilbert with that 30-day wait. There certainly may be a greater damage by rushing to judgment financially.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. We now will ask the interested party to come forward. And you also will be given up to 10 minutes. And when you see that yellow or orange light come on, that means you have about a minute left.
David Sanchez, Tempe, Arizona. Just to give you a little background again. During the last two council meetings, we did produce a sworn, I'm sorry, deposition by Mr. Rodriguez that he had concerning East Valley Patient Wellness Group. Our council at the time provided it to the town of Gilbert, which he basically said in his deposition that he was hired and he did work for East Valley Wellness Patient Group as a Realtor. That's in his deposition. To go back to the, again, Mr. Rodriguez is trying to spin this as far as who's ownership, who's not. I can just tell you this, that me and my wife, Kathy Sanchez, were the original application submitters for several different dispensaries, several of them. I personally got up here in front of the council, and I made a mistake when I added our doctor, a medical director, as a manager of the LLC. I did that because at the time, Department of Health Services told us that's how it had to be. After the licenses were issued, we went to the doctor and we said, "You're not actually, you don't need to be a manager. Remember, you need to come off." He agreed. He signed over 10 different times documents to us. What's happened, from fast-forwarding from there to now, Mr. Rodriguez has contacted all three of them and basically assisted them, guided them, told them what to say. He's hired counsel for them. You know, he's talking about these proposed ownerships that are supposed to be here. Where are they? They're not here. Because they realize they're no longer owners. We came to a position where, on the doctor's case, he was never a manager, never a member. We went to the Department of Health Services, who they've known, me and my wife, from day one. We went and asked them, "How do we legally go about doing this?" They gave us instructions how to do it. We did it, we followed it, and that was it. What he fails to tell you is that they were not fraudulently signed off. They signed off on their own free will. That's how it was done. The reason a payment was made to one of the members was because he had invested some money in it. But that being said, this is our third meeting now. Our first meeting in front of the town council hearing board, I believe it went something 4-3, like that on the vote. And the reason it did was because they were asking Mr. Rodriguez to provide some type of authorization, some type of contract, some type of anything that the Sancheses agreed to let you do this for East Valley Patient Wellness. He said, "Oh, I forgot, I didn't bring it today. I'm sorry." That's why it got extended another 30 days. Gave him another 30 days, the next council meeting, to provide some type of information, some type of contract agreement, whatever he says he has. That's why the second hearing went 7-0, because he could not provide anything. Here we are on our third one, and he's doing it again. There's not a contract or an email or verbal that's going to magically appear that me or Kathy has an agreement or authorization for Duke or any of his entities to represent East Valley Patient Wellness Group. There's nothing out there. And that was the basis for the 7-0 last council meeting hearing, because they gave him the opportunity to provide that. What he's asking you again is, in essence, the same thing. Give us another 30 days to try to create or find something that's out there. There's nothing out there. He said in his previous statement, when we first came up here, that it's in email form or verbal form. Where is it? Why isn't it here? Because there is none. That's why he was defeated last time, 7-0, because there's nothing out there. He has no authorization, he has no contract. He has absolutely nothing to do with East Valley Patient Wellness Group. And just to mention, for what Mr. Kaufman said, being that he's representing Ultra, or I'm sorry, I take that back, Zone Properties. or I'm sorry, take that back, Zone Properties, and I don't know if you can go back through the files of the town council meetings, but Duke Rodriguez was the CEO of Zone Properties. He handed me his card, we gave the card, you should have it there in your file somewhere. So he does have, he does have an equitable interest in Zone Properties. When we asked Mr. Rodriguez to find us a location, Duke Rodriguez and Scott Armstrong, when we asked them to find us a location for the dispensary, we asked them, when he came back and said, I found a location, we're renting it for $1,800 a month. I said, that's great, let's, let's put everything in order, put all the paperwork in order. We come to find out he put it in his own LLC name, in Decumbre. Mr. Kaufman is saying they spent-
David, excuse the interruption. When was that timeframe?
For-
2012, is that?
For what? I'm sorry, for what?
You said that you, at that point, there was a positive relationship and you said-
2013, well, in 2013, Mr. Scott Armstrong introduced me, it was about February or March of 2013. When we met with Mr. Armstrong first, he then introduced us. We met with Patty Howland, which is the broker that Duke used to work for. And by the way, Patty, if you go back and look at the records, the first hearing, she did come up here and she did state that Duke did fraudulent transactions. She looked him in the eye and she said, you know, you've robbed the Sanchez's and you're trying, and he took one of the council members, he's trying to hijack the license, basically is what it is. So here's a case of us hiring a realtor, him putting in his own LLC, and basically trying to force us to do an agreement with him. Mr. Kaufman says they've spent, you know, six figures or whatever. We never asked them to purchase that property. We never, ever discussed that. You won't find one document, one phone message, anything that we've asked Zone Properties, Duke Rodriguez, or any of his workers to purchase that property. Never, ever, ever was discussed. They did that on their own free will because they felt they had an agreement with us. So here we sit on our third meeting, he's asking for another extension to produce some type of document that he has authorization, some type of contract, some type of verbal agreement. This is our third one, and he still hasn't produced it. And he's asking to extend again. There is nothing out there like that. There's absolutely nothing out there like that. And we don't want to divulge all our legal aspects into this, so I would just ask the council just to base it off the fact of what the 7-0 meeting was. Produce a document that Ultra Health has authorization to work for East Valley Patient Wellness Group. They gave him that opportunity, he couldn't do it. And we're here on our third, possibly now even the fourth, looking for the same document. That's why we would hope that the city council would honor what they've recommended, was to keep the revocation. And there is harm being done, because every day we can't proceed, it's money out of our pocket that we're losing, every single day. And we've been delayed now 60, maybe even 90 days more, on top of, you know, the months and months previous to this. So, you know, we're looking for the same type of document that they've already asked him to bring and he hasn't been able to provide. Anything at the deposition they're talking about for me, there's nothing like that I can provide, because there is no document like that out there. There's absolutely nothing out there. So, you know, we would just ask respectfully if the council would just go forward with the original decision so we can conduct business as usual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, did you also wish to speak? Please.
Yes, I just have a few things to touch up on. I've been working very, very hard on this program for over four years. I have put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it, I believe in the medical marijuana program. I did hire Mr. Rodriguez as a realtor. I don't know why he's standing up here and just lying, because his broker can testify to that. I am honest, hardworking, God-fearing. I am just trying to do my best to, to run my business, and for that attorney to stand up and say, I am a crook, I resent that, that it's totally false.
I think I'd like to ask a question of the two of you. Our assignment is to either uphold the revocation of the Planning Commission or to reverse it. If we take those two scenarios, if the council tonight upholds the revocation, what happens next for you? If we reverse the decision, what happens next? Because I also realize there is a judicial process going forward, completely separate from the council, that also is complicated, as was mentioned, that you're involved with. But if tonight's decision is made to uphold or reverse, can you describe what you do next?
If the decision is upheld, then we would just, we've already informed the Department of Health Services. They've, they've brought us, they actually brought us in for a meeting to discuss what was going on here. They know who all the players are, they know what's going on. They've asked us just to keep them updated, which we have been. They're the ones that provided, I don't know if you saw this, but they provided the letter, the ownership letter of who is the principal officer of East Valley, which is Kathy Sanchez. And so we've been in direct communication with Department of Health Services. We actually had to meet with the enforcement division because of certain items that are going on that I can't mention right now. But if they were to grant it, we would contact Department of Health Services tomorrow, and they would, basically right now, they're, we're just on a hold status with them. Mr. Rodriguez can't contact DHS, Department of Health Services, and ask them any questions about this, because he has no authorization, again, no contract, nothing. Even the two members that he's mentioned, they will not discuss any of this, any of our business dealings with them whatsoever, none whatsoever.
So if we uphold, you're able to proceed, or do you have to wait for the judicial process?
No, we do not have to. We would, we would start immediately the very, tomorrow.
And do you have another site?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And I assume it's nearby?
Yes, yes, sir. It's two lots down.
Okay. And have you purchased the site, or is it-
We have purchased it, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And if we reverse, then I guess you're just still in a holding pattern to go through a process to see-
We would stay in the same holding pattern and just, we've got materials on order, we've got a building on order right now that's, you know, it's just costing us, because we have a license sitting out there that we can do nothing with, because, you know, Mr. Rodriguez has basically manipulated the system and just keeps dragging this thing out. I think, you know, this town council has given him sufficient, three meetings to provide the document they've asked him for, and he can't provide it, because there's not one.
All right. Thank you. Other items for the, David Sanchez, or do you want to have town attorney, Councilmember Peterson?
I just had a general question. Is the facility that was permitted originally, is that completed? Is it halfway completed?
No, there's nothing. It's bare land.
It's still just an empty lot?
We've got two empty lots sitting there right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So to the council, I could close the public hearing and we could have some dialogue. Are we at that point, or do you have any other questions?
Mayor, members of the council.
You said you'd give another-
There would be a-
Oh, the rebuttal time. Thank you. And the rebuttal time that was communicated was three to five minutes, and so let me turn to the council and see how much rebuttal time you'd like. Three minutes?
Yeah.
We'll begin the rebuttal time, and you'll be given three minutes, both the applicant and the interested parties.
I'll make it brief. It's amazing when you hear the story, you know, you hear these complete different opposites, and that's not the case. For example, simple question, you asked, is there a building? Yes, there's a building, it's been purchased, architectural design. This committee, this planning committee has reviewed those plans, those plans, the building's ready to be delivered and put on the site. So there's more than empty land. Secondly, they said, this just happened, and gee whiz, you need to look at the record, the record that the town of Gilbert now currently possesses. Look at the original applicants, David Sanchez, Kathy Sanchez, signed on this location, on this building. It comes to, not to the fact that they said, I'm the realtor, this never happened. What it is, is they wanted a better deal and they found a different partner. But they knew from day one, they were in this room when that use permit was being reviewed and approved. They came to this podium and recommended, build this facility, Cumbre Investment is a developer, we're behind it, go, rah rah rah. There's too much of an actual record that you can't make go away. Nobody realized that we would get to this date in the future, and all that record is there. It's there. They were here. Testimony's been given a year plus ago. I was here July 2013, and we had the last hearing for planning zoning. I was here before the, before the town council. Staff members were present, they were all a party to this. The Sanchez's were present. It wasn't as though this was done behind anyone's back. Every party knew up until recently, January 2014, is all of a sudden a new party was introduced from Colorado who came forward, who snookered them, that made them believe all of a sudden they were going to get wealthy, and they tried something that shouldn't have happened. There is a contractual relationship. It's evidenced by emails, it's evidenced by signed agreements, it's evidenced by oral agreements. There is a complete and long history that cannot be wiped out. If it was that simple, why aren't they providing the deposition? Why aren't they agreeing as the judge has asked for? It's very likely that everything they just told you, the judge may say, that's enough. You haven't abided by any of my demands, you haven't produced one document. There is a long history, it's been documented. We couldn't have gone back in time and changed the record. One council member was looking at a license and said, look at this license. I can open the license here and show you a previous license issued by Department of Health Services that specifically names DBA's, the Ultra Health deal. And I can tell you that we do have conversations with Department of Health Services regularly. They've called us in and says, tell us what's going on. And they realize, and there is an ongoing investigation as to how these members were properly, improperly removed and replaced by the Sanchez's. So don't believe that, oh my God, we are two innocent people and we've never done it. We've asked them why they've got a bankruptcy. The reason they got a bankruptcy, he couldn't sign for a license. We've asked, what about other misdealings? What about the fraud? What about Mesa PD raiding your house for drug distribution? There's a long history of facts that they want to not cover.
Thank you.
Again, Mr. Rodriguez is saying he has emails, verbal, written, there's nothing been produced in the last three meetings, absolutely nothing. Just to hit real quick on, and I know I don't want to bring the legal aspect into this, but on the deposition part, I did not blatantly miss my meeting. I had a meeting in Clifton, that's where, another dispensary that we are running, I had a meeting down in Clifton. We notified our attorney from somehow, I don't know what happened at that point, but we provided proof that I was in Clifton, Arizona, on the day of deposition. I'm not trying to hide anything. We're in a forcible detainer lawsuit on a second party. We are, me and my wife, and they're asking us, the reason I didn't bring up, because none of it was relevant to the case. They're asking us about bankruptcies 10, 15 years ago. What does that have to do with a forcible detainer? I was doing that because my legal counsel instructed me to do that. He said, answer relevant to the forcible detainer case. That's all it is. Again, he's just trying to provide more, trying to get more time out here. The bottom line is, there is no agreement. That's why it went 7-0, because they gave him an opportunity already to bring the agreement. He just stood up here and said, there are emails, there are signed agreements, where are they? Where are they at? He should have provided them in the last three meetings, today, last meeting, the first one. He's, he said that every time. If we come to the fourth one, I guarantee you, he'll say, there's still, there's a document out there. There's this, there's that, there's emails, there's verbal communication. There's absolutely nothing out there like that, nothing. And we, as a whole, as a one, we, we felt manipulated by Mr. Rodriguez, we felt he took advantage of his position. Again, we never asked them to purchase anything, and we just want to go ahead and move forward and do business. I'll also mention to you, he's also in litigation with a couple other dispensary owners, because he's doing the same thing to them. Same exact thing that he's doing here in Gilbert, he's doing in Florence, Arizona right now. And I actually had the dispensary owner here, but because of prior commitments, he couldn't, he couldn't remain, and he was gonna, if you want a written statement from him, Duke Rodriguez has dragged him through the same kind of mud he's dragged us through. Basically manipulating the system. And the reason you'll find, just to touch on the license real quick, we were gonna, we were gonna have Mr. Rodriguez be a management company for the dispensaries. We gave him a little bit of authority. That's when he started contacting, our last straw was, he changed our license and added Ultra Health on there, which we never, ever gave him permission. Once the administrator for Department of Health Services, she says, hey, I just sent out a license that says Ultra Health. We immediately told her, cancel it and reissue a new one. That's why he got that one, and that's why he went all over town trying to attract investors by saying, this is my company, my license, everything else. So it's just, we've been manipulated the whole time. Yeah, and just to mention, he's saying we have partners from Colorado, we have zero partners. There's no partners involved with us right now, no, I mean, every, there's been a lot of people that has approached us, we have zero partners, no contracts, no nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. To the council, if we close the public hearing, that would mean we don't have additional testimony or comments, I should say, is that, are we ready?
Mr. Mayor, down here, Mr. Mayor. I believe it may benefit the council to have some instruction focusing on what the issues are in this matter, in the view of the legal, the legal office. And that is that the question before you is whether Mr. Rodriguez controls or has permission to use the dispensary registration certificate for CHA 77. The attorney for, for Zone Properties said that the evidence they hope to get, if I heard him correctly, the evidence they hope to get from this pending deposition will show that Mr. the Sanchez's entered into oral agreements with Mr. Rodriguez or his associates to develop the property. But whether or not these groups have an agreement, whether or not these groups have breached their agreement, is not the question before you. The question is, who owns the certificate and who is authorized today to use that certificate?
Thank you. And please tell us, the evidence that you have seen would say, with the recent, as Vice Mayor Cook's question, that the certificate currently belongs to which group?
Mr. Mayor, without commenting on the evidence, because it's, it's the duty of the mayor and council to weigh the evidence, the, the documents in your packet reflect communications from the Department of Health Services. And if the council believes that that evidence shows that East Valley Patient Wellness and/or the Sanchez's control that certificate, and that's what the Department of Health Services believes, then I will let that direct your decision.
And that would mean we would uphold the revocation, if we believe that, based on what we've seen?
If you, if you believe that the evidence supports the contention that the applicant has not complied with the conditions of the use permit, meaning he is able to show that he is authorized by the state to operate a medical marijuana dispensary, then you would uphold the Planning Commission decision, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Cook?
So Jack, there's an expiration date of August 7th of 2014. What does that mean as it relates to the Arizona Department of Health? Do they do an extension? Is there, because of this process? Can you kind of help me understand a little bit more about that expiration date?
At the plan, at the, at the close of the Planning Commission meeting, the Sanchez's produced a new certificate with a date, expiration date of August 2015. It did not make in your packet, but I'm told it's on the board behind me.
Okay. And that is the most recent document that we have received?
That's a document the Sanchez's brought to the July Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Has that one been verified with the Department of Health Services?
It has not. It differs only in the expiration date from the version that was attached to the letter from the Department of Health Services that was sent to the Sanchez's and then forwarded to us in April.
Do we have one that has been confirmed with the Department of Health Services that shows who, who holds it?
The only document we have from the Department of Health Services, we have, we have several documents. The first was, and it's, I believe it's an exhibit in your packet, is a version with the DBA Ultra Health on it, the department said was void and not valid. And then there was a version attached to a letter sent to the Sanchez's, which was then forwarded to the town from the Department of Health Services.
So the Department of Health Services did forward us a previous one that showed just the Sanchez's on the certificate, is that what you're saying?
The Department of Health Services sent a version to the Sanchez's with East Valley Patient Wellness Group, because that's who, the Department of Health Services, at least according to the certificate stating, holds the, the certificate, not the Sanchez's, just to clarify.
I understand, but I'm sure, have we checked to see who the partners and owners of East Valley Wellness Group are of a public record?
The, two items. First, the, what's relevant is who the Department of Health Service recognizes as controlling the certificate and controlling the entity. The April letter in your packet from the Department of Health Services identifies Kathy Sanchez as the principal owner of, or principal officer of East Valley Patient Wellness Group. So what's relevant is who the Department of Health Services believes controls the group. And the, the legal office has not checked the, the corporation website to see who's listed as the principal officer.
Where is that document with the Department of Health Services verifying that the Sanchez's are the ones recognized as controlling or owning that group?
I will defer to Catherine identified in the staff report, because I don't have them tabbed in front of me. And that letter I referenced is now up on the screen.
And this should be, Mayor Lewis and council members, this should be attachment six in your packet.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just, has there been any allegations or even insistence that either of these documents or any of these documents by Department of Health Services have been fraudulently, fraudulently produced?
To my knowledge, no.
Thanks.
I'm ready to close the public hearing. I'm just checking right and left. Okay, I officially close the public hearing on agenda item 24. Any additional discussion or motions? Councilmember Ray?
Mayor, I move that we uphold the Planning Commission's revocation of UP 13-07 due to failure to comply with conditions of the use permit.
Second.
Okay. With that motion, second, please vote.
Just real quick, do we need to list the findings of fact, or? Just real quick, do we need to list the findings of fact or in the motion?
You could adopt the planning commission's findings of fact.
And so Councilmember Ray's verbiage is appropriate?
Yes, if he-- Mayor, members of the council, and Councilwoman Ray, if you would add to your motion that you're adopting the findings of fact of the planning commission, well, add that of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Do you-- Does the second also concur?
Of course, yes.
Okay, thank you. Do you need us to revote? All right, that's approved with a seven of the vote. Thank you. Thank you for coming and participating. We move to the final part, the communications. Report from town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. A couple announcements I wanted to recognize. Town Clerk Kathy Templeton and Kendall Richardson for this meeting marked our first meeting under our new agendament, agenda management software system. They did an excellent job implementing that, and it's gone very smoothly. So good work to them, and Kathy's been waiting for this software for a long time.
Yes, I think we should clap.
Also, Fitch just communicated to us, they have upgraded one of our water resources MPC bond from an A-plus to a double A. That's very impressive for a subordinate issue.
All right, here comes another one.
And then I'd like to have our Parks and Recreation Director, Rod Buchanan, come to the mic to introduce a new employee in his department.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My pleasure to introduce John Kennedy, who is our new recreation manager. He brings a track record of business growth, fund development through entrepreneurialship, and a variety of different Parks and Recreation experiences. So please welcome John Kennedy.
Thank you, Director Buchanan, and thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council, town council, excuse me. My honor to be here, very excited. When I saw the job posting come up, you know, I was looking at it, checking off the list, and it was checking all the bullet points I was looking for. And then the next step that I went through is I went to the town's website, which is a pretty logical thing to do. And what stood out to me is on the front page of the town of Gilbert's website, there are six buttons on the right-hand side. One of those buttons is Parks and Recreation. That told me that this town values quality of life for their residents and really have their act together and things in the right order. So certainly appreciate the comments that Director Buchanan made. My background, I was the director of the Parks and Recreation Department of Bloomington, Illinois, so I come to you from about 1,600 miles away, and really enjoying the heat. And what you call humidity doesn't seem like humidity to me, so I'm really comfortable right now. It's not too bad, but next year I'll probably be right there with you. But really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to getting to work more with you in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So from Illinois, we welcome St. Xavier University and John Kennedy. Good to have you here, John. Vice Mayor Cook, you had a chance, and I realizing, I will have to defer back to town manager if you had any other items, but there was a recognition for Parks and Rec activities, so tell us more.
Well, having those two fine gentlemen up front, because they are a very major part of that. Last Thursday, the Town of Gilbert Parks and Recs program received two awards for their excellence in providing two special programs. And what I learned, this has been the first time in 12 years that our Parks and Recs team has won an award, but we won two. That was phenomenal. And then we had a whole bunch of other nominations that was even more than the other communities. So our team is just a outstanding team.
Thank you. Another round of applause. And back to our town manager, did you have any other items?
I just wanted to add something in addition to Councilman Cook's comments. That was the first award our Parks and Recreation Department has won in, I believe, over a decade, Rod? Is that correct? Over a decade. And it's, there were no other award winners that night that actually received two awards. We only community received two awards that night. So great recognition for the hard work they're doing.
Thank you. Other items from town council on current events?
I think I already gave mine earlier, and so meeting adjourned, we'll see you at the league conference.